And won me from all sins, from death and from the power of the devil, not with gold or silver, but with his holy precious blood and with his innocent suffering and death. That I may be his own and live under him in his kingdom and serve him in everlasting righteousness, innocence, and blessedness, just as he is risen from the dead, lives and reigns to all eternity. This is most certainly true. So we can look at Luther's explanation of the creed and we can kind of outline what this means for us. We talked with Pastor Keith last week a little bit as he introduced this topic, the second article. Talked about Jesus, talked about the names of Jesus, talked about the role of Jesus, what all that means. He introduced Jesus as Lord before the close of last session. I think we were still talking about that. What does it mean to have a Lord? I think we understand what it means to have a Redeemer, one who paid the penalty for our sins and bought us back from sin and death that was ours prior to faith in Jesus, prior to his coming, to give himself as the ransom for all people. But Lord, Lord. Remember some of the things we talked about last week with regards to Lord? What does it mean to have a Lord? How do you respond to that? Lord, Jesus. Ruler.
Yeah.
Leader, protector. I didn't hear that last one. Healer. Okay. But in that term, Lord also is the understanding that Jesus is our King. Right? Jesus, our King, the Almighty King of the universe. We understand that he came born of Mary. Baby wasn't the King at that time, but he is the future King and he is the one who will return and judge the world. On the last day when Christ returns, our Almighty King will come with power and authority, all authority in heaven and on earth, will raise the dead and he will judge the world. And then we will spend eternity with our Lord. Lord. Other things that we should talk about concerning Jesus. We talked a little bit about Jesus, the only begotten Son of God, the eternal Jesus. As you think about that phrase, the only begotten Son of God. We have an understanding from Scripture that Jesus is the eternal Son of God, without beginning and without end. How is somebody begotten without having a beginning? Wow. I can't wrap my mind around it. Jesus is of one essence with the Father, the same substance as the Father. We confess in the Nicene Creed that he is begotten, not made, being of one substance with the Father, by whom all things were made, one substance. He's the same thing as the Father. Yet the Father has no beginning. So the eternal Father, who has no beginning, has begotten a son who also has no beginning. Absolutely mind boggling when you consider that our Savior Jesus has been in existence from all eternity past without ever having had a beginning. And he will rule as hang of the universe for all eternity in the future without end. Our Jesus is both God and man, conceived by the Holy Spirit of the Virgin Mary. Became a human being. Jesus is fully God and took on our human form, became a human being. The divine assumes humanity for us. But in that moment, that moment of conception, within the womb of the Virgin Mary, he became man. The eternal Creator of the universe became man for us. Now there's a significance, a deep significance for him being both God and man at the same time. God and man at the same time. And it has to do with us. Has to do with our sinfulness and our desperate need for a Savior. Talked a little bit about sin coming into the world. Satan came to Adam and Eve in the garden and began to plant doubt in their minds as to what God truly meant when he said, "Don't eat of the fruit of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil." God really say, and doubt began. Doubt leads to sin, sin leads to death. Sin came into the world when they doubted and violated God's command and everything changed. Everything in the universe changed in that moment. Sin broke everything. We, as human beings, we're begotten of our parents. We are of the same essence, the same substance as the two that conceived us. Fifty percent of my DNA from my father, fifty percent from my mother. I am of the same essence, the same nature as they were. All the way on down through the generations, going back to Adam and Eve, human beings are of the same essence, the same nature as our original parents, Adam and Eve. Once they sinned, everything was broken. And henceforth, every human being that has ever lived, ever will live, is broken in that same way. Condemned before God because of sin. Coming into the world, sinners. Would you look up in your Bibles Psalm 51? Psalm 51. Psalm 51 is the prayer of confession that David offers once he's confronted with his sin of adultery and murder, confronted by Nathan the prophet. And David wrote this psalm as a confession of his sin. Sinful from the moment my mother conceived me. David, the prophet, writing under inspiration by the Holy Spirit, speaking about his own sin, speaking about our sin. Sinful from birth, sinful from the moment of conception. As soon as sperm and egg come together, sinful human life was formed. And what does sinful human life deserve? Death. Death. God promised that Adam and Eve would die because of their sin. That promise, that curse continues through all generations. Kind of depressing, isn't it? All generations, all human beings condemned to death, not just physical death, but spiritual death, eternal death, eternal separation from God because of that piece of us that is our human nature. And then we go and we sin on top of that. We actually commit sin. We are condemned without our Savior. That's the gravity of this whole situation. That's why we need the Savior. That's why he came to be one of us. But think back to, think back to God creating the world. The Trinity, all the Son and Holy Spirit together for the creation. But even before that, I can just imagine talking, talking about how this is going to be. And we're going to put people in this world because we love people. But they're going to turn against us, rebel against us and want nothing to do with us, curse us. But we love them. We've already got a plan in place before anything is created, knowing what's going to happen, that they're going to need to be redeemed, knowing that they're going to need to have this sin problem taken care of so that they can live free and in peace with God and their fellow man and be restored into this perfect relationship that Adam and Eve were created to be in with their Creator. So Jesus agreed, according to the will of the Father, to come to be one of us. God became one of us. We have an understanding from Scripture that Jesus is our brother. He's one of us. Can you think of some of the significances of Jesus being our brother, one of us? What comes to mind? He knows what we experience. Yeah. Over here, what else? Understanding of what life is like as a human being, sure. God never experienced what it is to be a human being until Jesus came into the world and experienced and along with us. So he knows all the troubles that we're subject to as human beings. He knows, you know, he knows all of the temptations that we face. He himself was tempted, wasn't he? You remember the story of the baptism of Jesus? Baptized in the Jordan River. The voice from heaven, "This is my beloved Son, whom I am well pleased with." The Spirit came down on him in the form of the Spirit. And the Gospel of Mark tells us, "The Spirit immediately led Jesus out into the wilderness to be tempted for forty days and forty nights, tempted in the wilderness." He faced every temptation known to human beings. And in addition to that temptation, just in the association with the people of the world that he lived with, subject to everything that we're subject to, all the temptations, all the trials, all the hurts, all the pain, all the suffering. Yeah, he didn't sin. He didn't sin. God-man did not sin. He became for us the perfect sacrifice for our sin, the only payment that could satisfy God's wrath over our sin. Only acceptable payment was the one who kept the law perfectly, kept God's will perfectly for us. Had to be God, had to be man, had to be God and man at the same time. As God, that sacrifice of his life is sufficient to pay for the penalty of all of our sin. As man, he could suffer and die, be raised again by the power of the Holy Spirit on the third day. God and man at the same time had to be that way. That's why we confess what we confess about him. The only begotten Son of the Father, conceived by the Holy Spirit of the Virgin Mary. God and man at the same time. What does all that mean for us now? What else does Jesus do for us? How do we go through life, living as children of God in this world with the God-man on our side? The God-man who ascended in bodily form into heaven and rules from there. Jesus promised that he would send the Spirit, didn't he? Promised he would send the Spirit so that through the Spirit, he's present with us all the time as we go through our life, as we suffer the disappointments, the illnesses, the hurts, all of the failures of this life. We've got, still have our Savior on our side. He's with us. Promises to be with us. Promises to support us, promises to meet our needs. You can do that as the God-man because as God, he's present everywhere, has all knowledge, has all ability. He continues to serve us that way. But there are other understandings that we have as well of Jesus. And we can look at the catechism and try to understand some of those, some of those things. Jesus is also described as a prophet. He's described as our priest, described as our king. What does it, what's it mean to be a prophet? We read just a little bit ago from Psalm 51, where the prophet David spoke. What is that word prophet? How do you define it? Someone who speaks God's word. Okay. Clearly, someone who speaks God's word. In the Book of Deuteronomy, Deuteronomy, chapter 18. Let's go there in your Bibles. Deuteronomy, chapter 18. In chapter 18 of Deuteronomy, Moses is giving some instructions to the children of Israel. The verse that we're going to focus on is down in verse 15, but I want to set the stage a little bit and see what's going on that leads to this statement. Somebody read, please?
But as for you, the Lord your God has not permitted you to do so. The Lord your God will raise up for you a prophet like me from among you, from your fellow Israelites. You must listen to him, for this is what you asked the Lord your God at Horeb on the day of the assembly, when you said, "Let us not hear the voice of the Lord our God, nor see this great fire anymore, or we will die."
Okay. Moses is saint of the Israelites. The Lord will raise up a prophet like me. Moses, one of the greatest of the Old Testament prophets, is pointing the way to another prophet who will come. Raise up a prophet from among his people. Listen to him. Listen to him. In the Gospel of John, in John, chapter 1, John is out in the wilderness baptizing and people are coming in droves to John the Baptist to be baptized. John's baptism is a baptism of repentance. He's calling people to repent, to confess their sin, step into the water and symbolically have that sin washed away, calling for repentance. And people are coming in droves. And the leaders in Israel, the religious leaders in Israel, the priests of the Levites, they're all concerned. What's going on out there? So they send a delegation out to John at the Jordan River where he's baptizing and they ask him, "Who are you?" One of the first things they ask him, "Are you the Christ?" And he denies it. He says, "No, no, I'm not the Christ." Second question they ask him, "Well, are you the prophet?" In Jewish Scriptures, there was an understanding that a prophet would be raised up from among his people who would bring the truth of God and salvation. "Are you the prophet?" They ask him, and John said, "No, I'm not him." And then they went on, "Well, are you Elijah back from the dead, one of the other Old Testament prophets?" No, he's not. But John was a prophet and Jesus said he was the greatest of the prophets because he spoke about the coming Savior and he pointed people to Jesus, the prophet. So now Jesus is here. John at the Jordan, he points to Jesus. Behold, the Lamb of God, who takes away the sin of the world. And John's disciples follow after Jesus after they heard who he is and began to understand what he's all about. But the prophet, Jesus, is a prophet to us, the one that God raised up from among his people. John, in chapter 1 of his Gospel, says that Jesus came to that which was his own. Born of the juice, came to the Jewish people. His own people did not receive him, yet to all who received him, he gave the right to become sons and daughters of God, children of God by faith in our Savior Jesus, who was raised up as a prophet to proclaim the goodness of God, to proclaim God's salvation to the world. Jesus, a prophet. But he's also a priest. He's the high priest who acts on our behalf. Now, in the Old Testament practice, the priests offered sacrifices, animal sacrifices, blood sacrifices to atone for the sin of the people. They offered those sacrifices first for themselves before they would go into the temple to offer sacrifices, but then again and again and again and again, numerous ongoing sacrifices, blood sacrifices for the people of the world, for the Jewish people. Jesus is our priest. He offered his life once and for all for the people of the world. Sacrificed his life on the cross. It's done, it's finished. No sacrifices needed anymore. His sacrifice was sufficient payment for all sin. One time, that's it, done. Our priest. Because of that sacrifice, we have complete forgiveness. We have a renewed relationship with him. The promise of life everlasting is ours right now. And we will be gathered together with our Savior Jesus at the last day when he comes as the Almighty King to reign and to rule over all of creation. Prophet, priest, and pen. Now, what do we do with this? If you come back to Luther's explanation, "We confess that I believe in Jesus Christ, true God, begotten of the Father, from eternity also, true man, born of the Virgin Mary, is my Lord." The next paragraph talks about our redemption. He redeemed us, a lost and condemned people, purchased and won us from all sin, from all death and from the power of the devil. Purchased us with his precious blood. The next paragraph talks about the implications of what that means for us. That I may be his own, live under him in his kingdom and serve him in everlasting righteousness, innocence, and blessedness. The implications for what Christ has done for us. Talk a little bit at your tables as to how this plays out for you in your own lives. As a person redeemed by Christ, as a person forgiven, as a person who has the promise of everlasting life, how does that affect how you live? How does that affect your outlook on life? Kinds of things you come up with at your tables? The significance of living under the lordship of Jesus, who has saved you, who promises everlasting life. What do you come up with? How does it affect how you live, how you think?
We kind of talked about, like, focused on redemption and how just knowing that all of us being redeemed by Christ, and we know that even in the struggles and the troubles like you talked about that we face. And we're just so blessed to have just the knowledge that everything we do and everything that happens to us is going to come to be redeemed. Like, we're going to be redeemed. Every situation we're in is here for a purpose. So just like kind of knowing that makes it easier to get through the struggles and to have a positive mindset and outlook on everything that's going on, so.
Thank you. Somebody else? Looking for a hand? Anybody who wants to tell us what you were talking about? John, coming your way. Go ahead.
I think it's just more and more of a me, as we've always known and we've taught, how important it is to start early so that the youngest of children have that understanding what you were talking about. In the children's message today, I mean, the ability for children to be able to repeat and to say it so that their entire lives are lived with this. You know, we work toward introducing this or reminding this to people. We need to keep doing that. But where we have the ability, start early, make sure it's built into children the way it was for most of us. We were remarking about the fact that we have it all in there, even if we don't remember Bible verse and reference, but we remember what was taught. We remember the fact that God has redeemed us. And, but imagine not knowing that early on and learning it only later in life, how much of your life you spend in fear, in doubt, in defeat, without knowing that God is in control.
Thank you. Anybody else? Paul.
To sort of build on your comments, the question I've encountered in studying some of this stuff is an interesting one. Which comes first, believing or belonging? I think for the, you know, what you're describing is belonging happening first. And for many of us, most of us in this room, that's probably true. We believe because of the families we belong to. The challenge for us in reaching out to those around us who don't believe is how to make them feel like they belong. Because that's what comes first, even with adults.
That's an interesting perspective. Thank you. I had a conversation a couple of days ago with a man, a man whose name is on a list that I inherited, a list of homebound folks that might need visits because they can't make it to church. I gave him a call. I really don't know the man. More than a year ago, I visited his wife in the hospital and I can say that she had a strong faith in her Lord and knew that in spite of her failing health that she was going to be with the Lord when she died. But I never knew the husband. So I called him and as we're talking a couple of days ago, he said, "I asked him if I could come and visit with him." And he said, "Well, Pastor, I really don't believe. I really don't believe. My wife was a strong believer and she was a very religious person. She was in church every week and she really, really believed. But I don't believe, I don't believe in anything." And he went on, he said, "I've been a member of this church since 1973. I've been a member of this church. I belonged here for, oh, man, 50 years." But he, at this point in his life, can say, "I don't believe." I don't think, how? How do you hear the message? Holy Spirit's been working on you. How do you have all of that benefit? Seeing God at work over the scope of your life and in the lives of other people and then say, "Oh, boy, oh, it's true. Wow. Now I got a challenge. Now I need to spend a little bit more time. Maybe I'll invite him out to lunch and we'll have a little bit more conversation and enhance some of that belonging." He also mentioned to me that when his wife died, he didn't have a service for her. And, yeah, I might want to have a service for her. She's, the body's in the mausoleum up the road. You think you could come and do a little service for my wife? Yeah, sure, sure. I'd be happy to come and do that. But it'd give me the opportunity to proclaim the gospel to him and to other people like him. But we have the benefit of knowing our Savior, knowing our Savior, believing that he is truly the God of the universe, the God who suffered and died, the God who became a human being for us. We have God on our side, a constant. We have God on our side, a constant companion as we go through life. When, when our life hits the bricks, we've got a God who can lift us up, brush us off. Here he is the rest of the way on our journey. And see that we get all the way through to the end of this life and into eternity. If you don't have that kind of hope, that kind of trust, that kind of belief, life must be pretty dismal. Don't you think? We can look at that from our perspective as people that have the, the joy of living, knowing our risen, living Lord and Savior. But if you don't have that, life can be pretty bleak. Yet we've got a Savior who wants all people to believe. A Savior that came for, to lay down his life for the sin of every human being on planet earth who has ever lived, who will ever live. He's that good. It has profound implications for our life to know Jesus. Profound. It enables us to get up and continue, one foot in front of the other, every day of our life, knowing that our lives are in his hands. And as bad as it gets in this life, I know, I know without any doubt whatsoever that I'm going to be with him forever and eternity. If I look at it from that eternal perspective and, and consider my life here in this world, this, this life is just a blip in comparison to eternity. If I put it into that perspective, I can see getting through even when I suffer. But I've got a Savior loves me, I've got a Savior who laid down his life for me. I've got a Savior who's going to pick me up and carry me while I can't even walk. While I can't sleep at night. I've got a Father I can pray to and a Savior who listens and a Savior who will enable me to get the rest that I need. Profound.
The fact that he gives us the privilege then to help our brothers and sisters and the community around us that don't believe in that. And empowers us to be able to do that and gives us everything we need to do it.
Sure. Thank you. The, the world, even if the world doesn't know it, they have a profound need for the Savior, even if they don't know it. And we have the ability, because he is such a part of our lives, that Christ is in us. We have the ability to speak words of hope and encouragement to those that don't have it, to those that, that need it. Yes. Let me bring you the mic.
I was just going to say that I think God uses us when we're not really usable. Because I have a friend, my best friend lives in Hawaii. And we always converse and everything. And when I was in junior high, Kathy would stay over at night at my house every Friday night. And I would make her come to confirmation class with me. And I said, I don't want to go, but you have to come with me, that kind of thing. And you know, just this year Kathy said, guess what? I am now a Lutheran. She said to me, all those times at your confirmation class, they really sunk in, and I'm a Lutheran now. It's a true story. I'm like, wow, you know, that was not my doing. It was not my doing, not at all. They're just in the place, like with SNX. And you, you know, God will use you.
We, we trust that God will use the words that we speak, the hope that we offer in Jesus' name to change people that don't yet know him. Well, I'm very hopeful that your friend is a Christian first. A Christian first before she's a Lutheran, but, but that's, that's a good story. Sure, sure. The, the things that we, that we learn, the things that we hear, the gospel message that we hear may not have an effect in our lives until sometime way off in the future. The message that we proclaim may be just the seed that's planted. And over time, somebody else has to water it, nurture it, care for it. Ultimately, it's, it's the work of God through the action of the Holy Spirit to cause that person to believe. I'm praying that I will have the opportunity to share the gospel with my friend who claims to be a non-believer, so that he will have that opportunity to change before his life is over. He's talking about some pretty significant health issues that he's going through. And I just wish, I wish he had the peace of knowing that Jesus is his Savior and is with him every moment of every day. Because that builds confidence, that builds hope. And gives us a vision for the future of the security that we have in our Savior. What else? Anything else on your mind concerning Jesus, the second person of the God? Jesus, Jesus does not hide from the Father. Interesting observation.
But there are many ways that we hide. One is finding people, it's easy to find many people that are so much worse than I am. You know, that guy that led the Holocaust, you know, or those guys that are just cursing up a storm next door to my house, you know? That's a way of hiding from God and exaggerating others' situations in order to make myself look better. And kind of negotiating with myself to kind of lift myself up by putting others down. It's a way of hiding from the truth, God, as we find him in his word.
Thank you, Bob. In your Bibles, we should go into John, chapter 14. John, chapter 14. For the past week or so, I've been reading this section of scripture with folks that I visit, either in their, in their homes or in hospitals or nursing facilities where they're, where they're living. I read this, I read this text from John to the family of a woman who may die. And it brought them an incredible amount of, of peace and confidence and hope. John, chapter 14. Jesus is gathered together with his disciples. He's in that upper room. It's the night that he was betrayed. Jesus knows exactly what's coming down the road. He knows that he's going to be arrested that night, he's going to be put on trial, he's going to be crucified the next day. But his disciples don't know what's going on yet. So he wants to provide hope and encouragement for them. Let not your hearts be troubled. Believe in God. Believe also in me. In my Father's house are many rooms. If it were not so, would I have told you that I'd go to prepare a place for you? And if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and will take you to myself that where I am, you may be also. And you know the way to where I'm going. Thomas said, Lord, we don't know where you're going. How can we know the way? Jesus said, I am the way and the truth and the life. No one comes to the Father except through me. If you had known me, you would have known my Father also. From now on, you do know him and have seen him. Philip said, Lord, show us the Father and it's enough for us. Jesus said to him, have I been with you so long and you still do not know me, Philip? Whoever has seen me has seen the Father. How can you say, show us the Father? Do you not believe that I am in the Father and the Father is in me? The words that I say to you, I do not speak of my own authority, but the Father who dwells in me does his work. Believe me that I am in the Father and the Father is in me, or else believe on account of the works themselves. I and the Father are one, Jesus said. There's no hiding the Father with Jesus. He's right there with the Father, telling his disciples that you've seen me, you've encountered me, you have encountered the Father as well. I and the Father are one. And as followers of the Lord Jesus Christ, he is now part of us, he is in us, and we are one with him and with the Father as well. That gives me a lot of comfort, a lot of hope and encouragement. And he's going to prepare a place for us so that we can be with him where he is. Not leaving us alone, not abandoning us. The God-man who ascended into heaven in bodily form. Got that? Jesus ascended into heaven as the man who is God. Holes in his hands, holes in his side, holes in his feet. Ascended into heaven as the God-man lives and reigns with the Father in heaven as the God-man. The God-man is going to come again at the last day. The dead in Christ will be raised, we will be gathered together with him for life in his new creation for all of eternity. That's the hope that we have. That's the truth that we can live in. That's the gospel message that's ours to share. So that the Holy Spirit can then use that message and change hearts and bring people into the company of believers. That's something to be enthused about. That's exciting stuff. Would you pray with me? Lord God, our, our Father in heaven, we're grateful, grateful for this incredible gift of your Son, Jesus Christ, that you gave to us. Because our sin had alienated us from you and you couldn't bear that. You sent your Son, you paid the penalty with his life that we might never knew. That we might know true peace and true joy and know that for eternity. We're grateful for that. Fill us now with the power of your Spirit so that we're empowered to speak words of, of hope and forgiveness through your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. That more and more people would know Jesus as Savior. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.